Good evening and welcome to the April Hatfield School Committee meeting. I'm Kristi Boudreau, Chair of the Hatfield School Committee. And it's Monday, April 10th, and we're excited to be here. As we call to order, we're going to open up with public comment. Is there a public comment tonight?
I would say we have all the work that you guys have put into trying to push for funding for the school's budget.
Thank you for joining us. I don't see that we're in on Zoom at this point. There we go. Oh, okay. So there is no one joining us remotely. And so we will move on to mission moments. I know I have one. Are there other mission moments?
Yes.
Okay. Principal Petra.
I want to say thank you to Jen Maloney today. She came in and sat in on some small group instruction in grades K to 3. So we definitely appreciate her taking time out of her day to come see the great reading instruction that's happening in Hatfield. So we appreciate your time.
Place your hand on her hand. Always.
We had a fantastic field trip to Washington DC last week. Tuesday at 6 o'clock in the morning, we sent 51 8th through 11th graders on a bus to DC. And on Friday night, they all showed back up, back at school.
That's a success.
Which is a huge success. And they had a great time. And the reports from the chaperones that were there, the folks that they interacted with down there, they were a fantastic, fantastic group as they represented Smith Academy in DC. And they all seemed to have just a wonderful time. So it's nice to get that going up again. The first time since 2019, we've run that trip. So we're looking forward to bring it back as it was.
Anyone else? So I would share, as we look at, you know, one of our district goals is to nurture an invested community and how that like seeps through our whole school system. So the start of last week, my second grader had a new student in his class. And so as we were heading in to drop off, he was like, oh, it's such and such's first day. It's not really like my kid to remember, like over the weekend, this would be a thing. And I was very proud. And I said, oh, well, first day at a new class, that's a big deal. And you might want to be extra welcoming and helpful. He was like, oh, we've already made a plan for it. We've got it. And I thought, what a great sign of, you know, I'm going to give a shout out to second grade teacher Laura Hoy for making sure that not only she had a plan, but her whole classroom had a plan for a new student coming in. And what a difference that makes. So proud of us. With that, the consent, is there anything that needs to come off the consent agenda? See, none. The minutes from 3:13 are approved. Do we have a student representative report?
We do not today.
Okay. Because we probably need a new student to represent.
Right.
Okay.
She's a graduate.
I know. So we will move on to administration reports. Superintendent Wood.
Sure. Let me brief. So we're working on developing our next iteration of K through, certainly K through 8, maybe just K through 5 curriculum for ELA. So we're going to be starting to have some committee meetings around that. And we'll begin after the April break to do that. At the moment, we have 19 school choice applicants. So we hope to see that number. Office staff have remarked that since we went online with our document, we seem to have gotten a flooding of applicants. So kudos to everybody who helped to get that going. I'm very happy for that. Just to keep folks informed, I was in a meeting with Chair Boudreau, and we got an update on a Friday afternoon, which is always when you want an update, on our heating system at Smith Academy. And one of our heat exchange units was completely rusted through. And so we are, that is shut down. We know that everything going to it is still working, but of course, it's leaking air, so it's not functioning the way it should be. So we'll hold off for a bit now that the warmer weather is here, and we'll start looking to repair that this summer, when they can get back up on the roof and try to do them. I'm trying to get estimates now on what the cost will be. I haven't heard back from our HVAC person on that. So it'll be coming. I am trying to look at ways that we can become more energy efficient. I'm meeting tomorrow with a company that works with our HVAC monitoring company that essentially similar to the solar project in a way, where they will come in, they'll do an assessment of their, of your building HVAC needs, they will do the investment of repair. And then whatever you save each year, you pay them essentially.
It's a performance contract?
It's basically a performance contract. And so I'll take a look at that and see what it can net us in terms of energy savings. I think, given our current state of repair, I'm not sure they know exactly what they're getting themselves into. But we'll see if it's something that we can entertain and go forward. It certainly would, it could be something that could be very valuable for us going forward. So we're hopeful for that. Our phones at Smith Academy are finally operating, and I think we've worked on most of the kinks. I don't think there are any more, that we have a few things that are working on there. At SA, we are looking at a vape monitor system. We, it just actually just came in today on a late UPS visit. So we'll install that. It's a device that would essentially detect the mist from vaping. And with a monitoring app on your phone, no matter where you are, you would get a notice, that notification that somebody's trying to vape in your building. So that we do that. At the moment, because our budget is so tight, I've had to put our exploration of a website on hold. I'm hopeful that after we finalize a few outstanding expenditures, excuse me, purchase orders that either we're not going to exercise on, or they're done. So we didn't spend all the money. The money will come back. But it's a bit of an expensive, the one that we're zeroed in on is not expensive to run annually, but it is expensive to do the migration initially. And that's where you need to pay upfront. So it's a little more challenging than I had hoped. So I've met with both staff now twice to talk about our budget. And I think that, you know, they've been very receptive to the conversation and where we are. I think they're staying very positive and know that they are part of the messaging that has to go out in support of what we do and how we do it. And so making connections with parents and families is really critical. So going forward, I'm sure they're all on board for that. They're also, you know, very eager to help in any way they can. Emails almost every day from several different staff. And so I'm hopeful that, you know, if there are Hatfield residents who are also staff, they can connect with whoever is doing any kind of organizing for if they do vote to have an override, can help in any way they can as well. I unfortunately have jury duty on it, starting on April 13th. I'm going to see if I can get out of it. But I am very curious, because in my 60 years, I've never been invited. So I'd like to get one day of it. So we'll see what it's all about. And then we have some staff changes. We had a long-term sub who ended her term. And so that, for special ed, and we'll be doing a bit of a patchwork position assignment for our Paris to finish that out. Dr. Brenner will head that up. I did get word from Mr. Sierra that he will be back in May. So that's very good news. So we're looking forward to his return. And we have a teacher going out on maternity leave, Mrs. Brunel. So we're excited for her. And no news, correct? No news there earlier? And we welcome, we had to have the staff for an IEP, and so we hired Jessica Callahan, and she's working with a student at Smith Academy. And that's my report.
Take a moment for questions?
Okay. I have three. I'll be quick. With the website update being put on hold, could we take a few minutes to just go through and kind of scrub our website for any like stock photos, you know, things that aren't ours?
Yes, we can.
And update any missing staff photos, things like that? I've had a request from a former teacher, I think three times now, to say like, hey, this website, let's do something.
Yeah. We kept wanting to wait until, because to change photos on that site is very, very hard to do.
Okay.
It's just, it's like an act of Congress, but we can do that.
Okay. The vape sensor, so it's something I should have been meaning to ask Dr. Driscoll, if it's a known issue at Smith Academy. My brother works at a different district, and it's a massive problem in his district where they had, they literally had their toilets clogged. They had to shut down the entire toilet system for the schools because there were hundreds of cartridges.
Oh, my gosh.
Flushed down the toilets.
So I can speak to that a little bit. So first of all, I think anytime that any youth is vaping is a problem. I would say comparatively, in talking to other area districts, I think we are, I would say better off in terms of what's happening. But when it happens, we want to address it. You know, we want to address it proactively, as well as, you know, when we catch someone doing it, making sure that they're primarily getting, you know, if they need help to get past it, getting that help. And this is one tool that will allow us to more, you know, more directly be able to see, you know, who's doing it and when it's happening and, you know, really how much of a problem it is. But in talking with folks, you know, we're not dealing with that, that kind of level. We have, you know, they're high school students, and there are a few of them making choices like that. But we're hoping to use this to help them.
Okay. And my last question was on the heat pump that's broken. We had some requests for HVAC upgrades for Smith Academy. I don't think for this coming fiscal year, but for the next two, maybe there was something to share too.
There was something to share.
Okay. Is this something that was going to be covered by that, or?
It would be covered under that, yes.
Okay. Like it was something that we were planning on upgrading or replacing anyway?
Yes. So if capital goes through as planned, we could have some resources to do that.
So sitting in tonight's conversation and having some other offline conversations, there's not a lot of cash available for capital projects. I would not hold my breath. So we may need to find some creative solutions. But let's get, I mean, let's see what the estimate is, and we'll go from there.
Yep.
Because I wouldn't foresee it getting into the capital. Other questions?
I don't want to get like too far in the weeds about this vape sensor, but I did have just like a little bit more I wanted to ask, in addition to what Adam already asked. So these are like notifications that go to a cellphone?
Yes. Actually, I think they can go to both the computer or a phone, because it's an app.
And they would go to the principal?
Yes. I mean, we would determine who the apps.
And then, okay.
Yeah.
And then the principal would go to the location, I guess. I don't like really understand. You would just like go and like try to.
Find evidence.
Intervene and discuss with the students.
And we're in most all high schools at this point.
I'm just wondering about like the process of that. Like, so we discover this and?
So I, you know, if I were to get notified on my phone, you know, if I were able to, if it was in the men's room, I could go in, or if it was in the women's room, I could have a female staff member go in. If there were, if there were, you know, a student in there or a group of students, we would have that conversation with them afterwards. And any, you know, anything that needed to happen from there. But it would allow us to, you know, one of the challenges, and this has been historically a challenge for forever, in, I mean, thinking way back before there was even vaping, you know, the, you know, sometimes it smells, but that's not immediate. So, you know, you have people walking by, or, you know, and, you know, the question's, okay, when was it happening? And, you know, do you go back and you look at the cameras and see, you know, 50 people using the bathroom in that time, or before it started smelling when it was reported? So this just allows a more immediate kind of, more immediate response. And aside from helping the students that it's, you know, that are having, you know, possible addiction challenges, it's helping the students who are uncomfortable because it's going on, which I think is the vast majority of students, who they want to just be able to go to the bathroom without having to worry about someone vaping next to them. And if that's, you know, if this can help us achieve that ends, then I think it's a good tool to be able to, able to use.
All right. Thank you for explaining. I have a tag on on the subject, so I'm just gonna, and then Kathy, you may have stuff too. Do we have policy that would cover this? Because it starts to kind of feel a little different than some things.
Cover having a device in the room?
Having a device that alerts around potential.
Not a specific policy. I mean, we have, we have a guidance around how to manage it once a student is identified as breaking the rules. So that piece we have, yeah.
Okay.
I have to double check. I bet we should have a policy on our videos, cameras online, so it would be a similar.
Similar. I'm just thinking, does it, it might be worth just a quick look and make sure that we're covered on that standpoint before.
You definitely have to do a notification.
Yeah. At the very least, we communicate that.
Yeah.
So, but if the policy team could look in and just make sure that they feel like we're totally ready for that if.
Yep. It's a 30-day content trial.
I want to skip you. I just didn't want to leave. Did you have questions?
No. I am just wondering if, can dogs smell vape? Like drug sniffing dogs? Can they?
I think they can smell anything. So I'm sure they could. I don't know, I don't know, and I could reach out to the, to the police department to see if they have, I don't know what their specific training is, if they're trained to smell it or not, or if that would, but I could certainly reach out to find out.
Definitely a policy about that.
Yeah. Yeah, we have that.
This is.
The hybrid between.
Yeah. It's different.
Which is why I just want to make sure that it's policy overlaps, instead of coming just a little shy of that. What's the timeline for that? There, you said the boxes arrived.
The box arrived, so we'll try to get it installed this week and communicate to parents and students and the 30 days countdown.
Okay. Dr. Driscoll?
Sure. So I already talked about the DC trip. I just want to reiterate that it was, it seemed like it was just a fantastic time. They, the students came back, even today, talking about it, they just were so excited. We also have, this week, we have, on Friday, the Guatemala trip is leaving. And then the week after vacation, we have the band Philadelphia trip going as well. So two other big overnight trips that are happening. It's nice to be able to see those coming back. We are in the middle of MCAS season right now. Last week, our 7th grade took MCAS. The week before that, 10th grade took MCAS. This week, 8th grade will be taking MCAS, and so it'll wrap up the ELA portion of the MCAS season. And then it will move on to math for a couple of weeks. We have, and this is part of the, our update in terms of nurturing community, our spring concert was inadvertently scheduled last year, but it was scheduled for the same night as town meeting. So we can't have both those happen at the same time. So we scheduled for the week prior. And we had another event running that we called the Cooler Communities Event, which is a really neat kind of collaboration with the town around kind of environmental awareness. And so our students at the elementary school, as well as the high school, have been working on kind of climate-related environmental impact projects. And so they'll be sharing those, they'll be sharing their projects out that night. So that was already happening, and the town has come in with a grant as well to provide other kind of entertainment during that time, to bring other kind of town organizations in local organizations to talk about ways that they're, kind of what they do as businesses or organizations overlap with the research that the students are doing. So they can, you know, they can, they can kind of see how, how what they're learning about may be applied in, you know, a local context or a regional context, which is pretty neat. So that's one thing that's happening. At the same time that night, we're also going to be, not the same time, but kind of staggered, we're also going to be having our spring concert and art show. So they'll be, we'll be bringing people in for both those events. The middle school will also be hosting their annual, now annual cornhole tournament. This is the second time, second year in a row with that. So we'll have a lot, a lot of stuff going on at the same time. And we're going to advertise it not just in Hatfield, but kind of, kind of widespread, or we'll have folks available if, kind of, not quite the same as a, as our open house that we had before. But we'll have people available for if there are members who are interested in school choice that come to that event, that'll be able to kind of take them on a tour and show them around, and show them kind of what the school has to offer as well. So we'll really be having kind of four, four different and related things going on at the same time to make it more of a spring kind of festival feel, rather than, you know, just the Cooler Communities Project or just the Spring Art Show. So we really kind of a nice, big event, which will include Hatfield Elementary. Yeah. So that should be great. We have, this weekend, April 15th, the Hatfield Fishing Game Club will be having their annual fishing derby. That is at Smith Academy on Saturday morning. And our fly fishing club is going to be having a kind of, like, we're not going to actually fly fish, because there's like 100 kids and a lot of lion from the back cast with little hooks. So we're, they'll be, they'll be able to learn how to cast with, and win some prizes, like a little kind of carnival game with fly fishing. So they'll be able to do that if they get tired of hanging by the pond. And that'll be run by some of our members, the student members of the club, which will be neat. Last month, the Smith Academy Event Planners, which is a student-run kind of X Block, and their whole job is to kind of create events at Smith Academy, they hosted a step-up day for the 6th grade. So they planned it all out, they organized it, they got permission from the teachers, and they worked with the 6th grade to kind of rotate through what a, what a day would look like there. And they all left, our students left excited, it sounded like the 6th grade left very excited as well. So that was, that was wonderful. Our sports, our baseball and softball teams had their first games last week, and they had had games this week as well. So that season has kicked off. Seems faster than I remember to have, you know, it seems like they just started practicing, but they're already playing games. There were a couple of other things I wanted to add, if I can get back to it. So the, a couple of other things that I had shared in the DIP, the District Improvement Plan update as well, I talked a bit about the event on May 4th. But we also had, you know, part of, part of having our revised program of studies, we have a lot of new course offerings and a lot of new, you know, some new AP offerings as well. So we have what was called a selection day at Smith Academy, which is around students selecting their courses for next year. So rather than just kind of blasting out the, you know, the email comes out and you choose your courses, they spent a day going through, so that way they went to their classes. So when they went to their science class, they were, they each student conference with the teacher from, you know, their science teacher or their social studies teacher, to learn about what the offerings were for the next year. If there were new courses, they talked about what the new courses were, if they were, you know, and, and they also got to talk with their teacher, but okay, I'm thinking I'd really like to try this AP course next year, or this honors course, so they could get a little feedback about, you know, what the, what the demands of that course are. And, you know, realistically, if, you know, if they, if they thought it would be a good fit, if there would be a stretch for them, or if, you know, if they weren't planning on doing it and they really should, they could, you know, they could get that feedback too. So it was really allowed them to get some, to go into the decision-making process to select their courses with a little more information about what, you know, what the, what the expectations would be. The initial results from that appear that our students are planning for a more rigorous year than this year. A lot more students expressing interest in honors and AP courses. I think encouraged to do so from their teachers who really said, hey, you know, you can really do this. So, which was really nice to see. We also have some SEAL of Bilingual literacy results which came in. So this, I believe started last year, the SEAL of Bilingual Literacy at Smith Academy, where students who were kind of at the upper level of, in their Spanish class, were able to take a Spanish language test. And if they score, and that consists of writing, reading, speaking, listening, and so if they, if they score a certain level on that, they achieve the SEAL of Bilingual Literacy, which is essentially kind of treated similarly to like, you know, a high score in an AP test in Spanish. And so that goes on the transcript. Colleges and universities will recognize that. Often they, you know, if someone has achieved that, they won't, if there's a language level requirement, they will test out of that when they go to college, or even potentially get credit for having achieved that. So we have had two students achieve, achieve that, and a few more are going to be kind of, they're very close, and they're going to be going for it. So, yeah.
Can you take that more than once?
You can. So if you, you know, if you take the, you know, and each section is broken down. So like if you score really highly on reading and writing, but, but you don't quite make it on listening and speaking, you can just take those sections again as well. So there are like four different sections that they take, and you can take, you have to wait 90 days after you take it. So this year, they learned from last year, they took it earlier in the year. So they, you know, they took it, I think, in like January or maybe early February, so that if they, they would have another chance to do it if they, if they didn't quite get it.
Good deal.
And that's, that's all I have.
Where are you advertising for that May 4th?
Wherever we can. So if you, we're open to ideas. We have, our art department is working on posters for it. So those will be going up all around Hatfield and, you know, it's, it's not a, people get a, I mean, when you advertise in other towns for school choice, they, they don't love that. But, so because this is a kind of a community-wide event, we can advertise for it on, you know, billboards, at, you know, the Big Y and Stop &amp; Shop or wherever. So we can really kind of go far and wide with this.
If I can just add, the Cooler Communities Project is part of what I'm doing with the Comprehensive Plan. So I'm also working with the Comprehensive Planning Committee and all those different town departments who have representation there to hopefully get these other departments involved in the Cooler Communities Project, so.
But like, I think the Cooler Communities thing is cool, but I know some people always look for that concert every spring.
Yeah.
So they want to know what night is the concert. So like specifically letting the Council of Aging know, or, you know, things like that.
Absolutely.
So maybe they're not going to come to the cornhole thing, but they'll want to come for the concert.
And I think the art department was working on the posters for everything that's happening.
Yeah, they are. Yeah. And she had specifically wanted to reach out to the, to the Council on Aging. She had mentioned that. But yeah, so all the, you know, different, different town organizations, but also, also beyond.
Good. And it'll be clear that the band concert and the art is gone, like it won't, it won't just be Cooler Communities on that.
Right.
Yeah, that's, we're waiting.
Gotcha.
And I hope we get some Star Wars costumes.
Of course. Star Wars day.
I'll be with you.
If you would like to borrow Jedi gear, let me know. We've passed through that phase. Okay. Other questions? Principal Petra?
All right. March 24th was a full day in service for our teachers. We had an eye-ready consultant in the building who provided both professional development as well as office hours for staff, because some staff also were involved with guided reading lessons and SRSU writing. So it was great to have the consultant back in to support our math implementation. Our guided reading consultant came in free of charge. She has known that we have been in the process of trying to work on a literacy plan for our building. We don't currently have a document that any new teacher walking in knows exactly what our literacy block should look like, what it should entail, assessments that we're using. So we're in the process of creating that. So she came for a half day to support our beginning of our writings of that. John Halpin, Chilean? John Halpin, Jillian, I hope it's Jillian, Jillian Williams, yes, Jillian Williams, right? Is it Jillian? Yes, good. Jillian Williams and myself met on April 3rd to discuss utilizing the planter beds in the front of our building. At this point, our PTA had, they were there as a Eagle Scout project. PTA kind of felt like they wanted to do something to like beautify the school so they planted perennials, but I'm in the process now of asking if I can commandeer them so that we can begin partnering with Williams Farm, possibly Bardwell Farm, to begin utilizing those to have students plant vegetables. So after the April break, when all of those perennials are, are taken out, we're going to have Jillian come back in and she's helping spearhead some of the plants, recommendations for plants that we should be putting in, some things that are really fast for students to see and get excited about, and then some more long-term things that we can plant now with the anticipation of harvesting in the fall. And our food service director is completely on board of, he thinks more of a tasting, he doesn't think we'll be able to create quite a mass quantity enough to be able to put in the, serve students but definitely have an opportunity to do some taste testing and sampling, so that'll be extremely fun. I think it's going to be important for, since we do have such amazing fertile soil and because we have so many farms around us, it would be really great to get our kids to be a little bit more understanding of farm-to-table concept. And Nurse Jean and I met with two representatives from the Collaborative who actually are planning on meeting with our admin team in June to begin seven-month-long trainings next year around social justice, so we plan on bringing the Collaborative in to do some work with our teaching staff. And that's about it. Short, sweet.
Questions?
Real quick, one, if you can get Owen to try some sampling of questions.
You know, I have to say, they're usually much braver when it's just kind of, the way that we had, in my previous district, we had done something kind of like this but we ended up making a big billboard of it, like a big anchor chart where kids were like, I liked it, I didn't like it, I might try it again. So they got a sticker and they could put their star or their sticker on whichever one they wanted but the caveat was they had to try it, so sticker for something to try, so.
Okay.
But yes.
For things that will be planted in the spring and then enjoyed in the fall, who's doing the summer maintenance on it?
Great question. So we have a summer program. And also, I haven't had a conversation yet with Parks and Rec but they do utilize our playground quite a bit and I'm hoping that if they're open to it, we might have some student volunteers or some kids who wouldn't mind coming to help either with the weeding, watering, or if available, some sampling, even in the summer. So I think between our summer programming that runs four to six weeks and/or the Parks and Rec, I think we'd be able to have enough of our volunteer staff to, to generate the ability to weed and water.
Right there, what is the weed? All right, okay. Dr. Gremler?
So I, I was able to join in the DC trip as chaperone and it was just, it was such a true testament to the, our department, the, the Student Service Department, I set as our motto for the year that diversity is an act and inclusion, or sorry, diversity is a fact, inclusion is an act. And it was just, it was great to see all sorts of kids who were able to, to show off in, in their own way socially and academically in different settings with different peer groups. And I will say, I know there was some concern about the age group that was going, that it was eighth and ninth and tenth and 11th. And all of the chaperones, we all agreed and reflected on our ride back that it was excellent, that it, we had the older kids there with the eighth graders, like it just worked out really nicely. It, it really showed the community that is our Hatfield schools, so we were able to see all sorts of different, different kids interacting, it was just great. At Hatfield Elementary, we've continued the pyramid work with preschool, with our, our full day and half-day work. I co-facilitated with Melissa a professional learning community time in the afternoon with all of the staff on multi-tiered systems of support and review of that guidance and really focusing on common language and what our next steps will be as we continue to build this structure in our schools. We welcome back Lisa Swanson, it was so great to see her. And I, and so this week, we are fully staffed and, but we, we wish Kelsey all, all of the luck at vacation and onward with her, her new babe that's, that's on its way at some point here. And I did, as Michael indicated, I've reposted our, our long-term subposition, but I, once we sort out some more details, I'll, I'll be sending home a letter probably with Melissa on what the structure will look like from here to the end of the year. So again, this is another time where I'm being extended, you know, but I have the licensure to do it and we'll all get it done and the, the priority is student services and making sure testing is done. And I do appreciate any patience with paperwork but we will, we'll keep plugging away and if, if there's any opportunity for, to put paperwork in backpacks or come in on backpacks, I would welcome that because the Hatfield male on a few tests, I realize, is extremely and just awe-inspiringly slow and everything goes to Springfield or Hartford first even if it's around the corner. So instead of any, any, you know, additional delays, if we're running a, a day or two late, I, I want to make sure we get things done. So I'm happy to pass things back and forth in backpacks, just let Heather or myself know. I've been helping support and plan for MCAS, particularly at the elementary school. And at Smith, I've been working with our staff to continue to map out our courses related to our skills block and also our CO-TALK classes. And then I am finishing up planning for this extended school year program this summer that Melissa was talking about, so that should, that work should be done by the end of vacation.
What grades, is the summer looking like it will include? I'm familiar with the preschool group doing summer, what is?
Oh, it's, it's if they're in their IEP, so it could be pre-K to 12.
Okay.
Yep. Depends if it's outlined in their, their IEP. We do run a early childhood program that's more the preschool age, although we do have some students who are transitioning to kindergarten that we may identify to be in that. And that's six weeks as well as the STAR program runs a six-week program and then there's a general academic elementary program that's four weeks as well as a Smith Academy program, but within all that, there's unique scenarios to meet the individual needs that are, the team agrees to that are in the IEPs.
Got it, thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Questions? Okay, so, does anybody want to pull the District Improvement Plan up and discuss that or did we see that and feel like we know what's going on? I think a lot of it got covered, that's why I'm just checking.
Yeah, it looks great to me.
Okay, then we'll move on to the Finance Subcommittee, which, you know, finance news changes by the hour. Mr. Sullivan?
Sure.
Do you want to speak to this and we can open it up?
Yeah. Cut me off whenever I'm saying something that's no longer relevant. But we met a couple of weeks ago, Christie, myself, Mr. Wood and Dr. Driscoll met to discuss coming up with a plan. The town had given us direction, they're struggling to balance their budget for next year and they couldn't do that with level services budgets for all departments, so they, the request was to do fiscal year '23 budget, less 2% for all of the major departments, some of the smaller departments because their budgets were small enough, it just, it wasn't significant enough to make the ask. So Hatfield Public Schools, just to recap, needed just under $470,000 more to maintain level services. But instead, the direction was going in the opposite direction, so a 2% cut would be $105,000 less than our current year spending, so about $572,000 less than we need for level services. It was a difficult meeting, the only way to make that happen is looking at staffing cuts. Discussed merging classrooms and grades in up the elementary school, so looking at classes that have fewer than 25 students, if it's reasonable to merge them together as an option. Discussed losing specials, art and music. Considered merging the middle school back into the fold at the high school system so that Smith Academy would just operate as a 7th through 12th school instead of having the two individual units operating independently. And, you know, loss in staff at Smith Academy, just to be aware, like it means fewer electives, it means fewer AP, it means a reduction in our sports offerings. We looked at, was there any way to reduce transportation costs? Not really or certainly not in a manner that would be palatable to parents, I don't We discussed reducing Mr. Wood's role, bringing him down to .6, so just over full-time. And then the even broader picture is what does this do to us long-term? It will make '23, '24 an interesting year in our school system, but it would be worse probably going at '24, '25, '25, '26. So it was a stressful meeting, but I appreciated everyone's input. It was, I think we, we worked to try to come up with realistic solutions to a very difficult problem and we're hoping that the other committees right now are working on other solutions that we don't have to face this problem.
So can I jump in? Is that okay? So it, it was a miserable conversation because obviously no one wants to have to face that because the only, the only way to get there is, is by chain, having really significant impact on kids by class sizes, by specials offerings and academic choices that are, that is just not where we want to be. So, but we did the assignment, we were asked to make the cut, we figured out that what that would be, we did it realistically. And then the next phase of budgeting, and I think I want to just take a short step back, just if someone's watching our meeting to kind of be able to frame out, this budget season is a real process, it's not one and done. And so to Adam's point, they looked at the, the budget with the growth we have in town within what the state allows us to increase our budget by the two and a half percent to get to that balanced budget would mean a, a lot of shrinkage in our services. So there would be cuts to get to the balanced budget without an override. And then the next question is, well, okay, if we put an override on the table, which means we're going to take a vote both at town meeting and then again at the ballot box, that we would put a vote on the table to say, we approve adding this increment of funding to our tax bills. And so the question that's getting hammered out tonight by the Finance Committee and the Select Board is, how big is that ask? And, and that's, how big that ask is changes how much of our budget request would get in there. So when we put our budget forward, we knew we needed 5.7 million from town to be level-serviced just to keep doing what we do today and then we, we asked for an additional 264,000. And so tonight, they're going through that and, and making those choices and a lot of Hatfield parents spoke up. They've written in both to the Select Board and to the Finance Committee to say, we support our schools. Our teachers have come out to say, we support our schools and, and paying for them. And so I think they're, they're asking the Select Board to give the schools what they're asking for to fully fund our ask. And so that's tonight's conversation. I think it has implications on whether we can vote on something because I don't think we can vote on something tonight, but we're, we're going to need to advertise. I think we'll learn tonight because they have to have their warrants started tomorrow. We'll learn tonight, what is the number? So the override is going to include some portion of new funding. You know, is it, is it the 264, is it something shy of that? And once we know that, then we can say, here's what we can do with those extra funds. So a few meetings ago, we put forward, you know, we could look at adding foreign language in the elementary school, we could make Smith Academy a destination district for something like computer programming. So we've looked at various things that we could offer with that override that would make us a more attractive district, which would help get our enrollments back up by both keeping local students with us and also bringing in additional choice students. And when, we have put together a fairly aggressive plan on growing the enrollment, but the reason for it is that that growth will pay for the investment we need to keep building. So the 264,000 we asked for would actually be offset by the growth in revenue, we just don't see the growth in revenue for a year because of the way the payment structure works with Jesse. So we're going to need to stay really engaged. I, I think this committee is really engaged on that and, and talking to the public. We invite our families to ask questions. We are never going to tell you how to vote, but we can inform you with everything we know so that you can make the best decision that's possible. So right now, I'm suggesting, I believe, that we are going to be back here, probably the, we had been holding an April time slot for the 24th of April and I think we're going to need to come back and that way we can have an official vote depending on, it, it may be the same budget we last looked at if they come back and say the whole 264 got in there. If they come back with something less, then we need to, we need to note that. And it'll also give us a chance to advertise that because it's a good opportunity for public conversation, which I think we have to do. So it, it's about stay tuned. Are there questions, conversations, things you're hearing? Do you want to talk about the budget?
I've heard people asking, I don't want to vote for an override until I know why the town's in this position or where did all the money go? And while I don't have a real answer to that, I feel like for the last 20 years, the town has been very fiscally frugal. We've never had a large pool of money, we've just always, I mean, not quite living paycheck to paycheck on a town level, but fairly close to that. And then leading up to the last few years, you know, where we've had so many either level-serviced or level-funded budgets and then the pandemic hit and we had some government funds that helped coast us through for two years and now that's all gone and we're facing reality of, wow, we don't have any money, everything costs more and we just, it's like a perfect storm of financial crisis, I think. And it's for the whole town, it's not just the school department. And really, it's many towns all over the area. It's certainly not only Hatfield, I mean, if you read the newspaper, you see other towns are facing similar budget cliffs and with huge gaps. But I think supporting an override, this is me as a citizen talking, is an investment in our town of the way of life that people want to have in Hatfield.
So a little fun fact, our tax rate in Hatfield in 2023 is less than half a percent from what it was 20 years ago. So it's been 30 years since we passed an override, but the good news is Hatfield has passed an override. It has happened, we can do it again, right? So part of it is just knowing that is a possibility. And, you know, I think all the departments are looking for ways of saying, here's something exceptional, a reason to vote yes. We're trying to make sure people feel like there's good cause across the board, so.
We have a history of passing large debt exclusion overrides in town as well. The, the new elementary school, well, new 20 years ago, was extremely contentious when it was being proposed and, you know, the town still came together and enough people came out and voted in support of it, even though it was going to be a large cost and a large loan for a long period of time. So it's, it can be done if, if people are paying attention and are really invested in the town.
I think that you just gave an excellent
I think that you just gave an excellent summary, the questions that I have heard, and I think that you've, I think that you just answered a lot of them in your summary are, you need this money and then you want to add these few AP courses, but then not getting the money means you have to get rid of all these teachers and that's, that's not connecting.
Right, so if, so right now there's about in the town budget, about a $600,000 gap to get from the balanced budget without an override to level services. Just to Kathy's point, the sheer cop, just the number of things that have gone up in cost is a huge chunk of what the override would cover. Just to get us to where, just staying where we are right now. And I think the thinking is, so the, the override covers that piece. And if we don't have it, that's where we end up losing, right? So we're looking at a little bitty add that would probably be the equivalent of two full-time teachers. Maybe three headcount if we added, we've talked about having a school psychologist. So that would be, so we're looking at that is if we get a little more than level service, if we want to invest. And then, but if, if we can't fill that gap, that's where we would be looking at.
The 2% cut.
The 2% cut. And the 2% cut, you know, the only place to take that, there's, you know, we took it, there's, there's fixed costs that you can't do a darn thing about, right? The heating bill is going to be the heating bill, although we would, you know, doing everything we can to have a lower heating bill. And that's only 13% of our budget. And then there's discretionary, which personally hate the term because it really isn't completely discretionary. It's not like you're going to have a school without textbooks or food service or athletics like, but that stuff is in there. That's 9% of our budget. And when we looked at making cuts, that took the biggest hit by, as a percentage, that discretionary budget, we shrank it down 20% to get cuts. And then there's salaries are 78% of what we do, we're, we're people, teaching people. So it's, that's where it is and, and that's why when you look at that 2%, there's, it's hard to get $572,000 out of a budget without having an impact there. So, and if we could do it any other way, I can promise you the four of us that sat in that room would find any other way we could to make that happen. But at some point, there's, there's, I think I answered one person's question who had said, well, can't you just get, you know, it was essentially, couldn't you just shop smarter? And you know, can't you get it out of procurement? I'm like, we don't even have enough in our procurement budget to make the whole cut. Even if we had $0 in anything we procured, we still wouldn't be able to get to the 2% cut off of level funded. So there's sort of two things on the table, right? There's the, the ouch of not being level serviced. And then there's the, but hey, if we put in a little bit more, now's our chance, we could invest a little bit. And I think, you know, as we've talked about all year long, that's the investment we know we strategically need to make to be able to flourish going forward. Because if, if we can't turn that around, we have much more difficult conversations that will not come at a cheaper price, so.
I think it'll be helpful to be clear that it's not truly the Board of Selectmen saying to cut our budget because of whatever. It's with an override, we don't cut our budget. If there is no override, which the town votes on, then we have to cut our budget.
Yeah, the, the finance committee and the select board are simply the stewards of the process. But they don't change the price tag, right?
So I just wanted to be clear that it's not, you know, those people sitting in the room downstairs saying that. It's, it's the town piece, townspeople that'll vote whether to support an override. And if they don't, then all departments are cutting.
I think like, really like, it's just like the, the perfect storm of events that have honestly come together.
That's what I called it.
We know how the expenses have increased there and we can't control most of those. I mean, our, like, I truly believe that our school district has managed our money exceptionally well for a long, long time, like our pupil, our per pupil expenditure is
Cannot be beat.
Cannot be beat, you will not get a better value for the quality of education that we provide. It's, it's really exceptional. And I also know that in a lot of ways, the schools are like the beating heart of our town and, and they mean a lot to people. But at the same time, a lot of folks that I have talked to just in town don't necessarily understand how proposition, two and a half words and how like there is a levy limit that is the total amount of money that the town can bring in and that cannot be changed without an override.
Massachusetts state law.
It's since 1980.
Yeah.
That's a, a great point. Is the town at its levy limit? We should have that conversation with them because I think they need, they need to understand that the, through taxation, they can't raise more than the two and a half. But there may still be a point of separation between that and their levy limit to be able to raise taxes.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I can't skip to it, but like, I think it's
But I think the town's, if it's very small, the, the town needs to understand that's why you need the override.
Right.
Yeah.
And you think about like, you know, Prop 2.5 started in 1980 or 81?
1980, yeah.
Okay, so, you know, costs generally since then have always increased more than two and a half percent annually. So just picture a small wave forming in 1980 or 81 and getting ever so slightly bigger. For the last 43 years, that wave is pretty big. And we've only had a couple of shots at taking a very small part off the top of the wave over the years.
Yeah, yeah, and like Christie said, you know, in the past couple of years, there were some, you know, COVID related funding and things like that, you know, that were received for the whole town through, you know, other sources, but those also have changed.
I think when we all really understand what's being asked and we look at what's comparable around us, both in the neighboring towns around us, in towns our size across the state, I think we will find that even with what we might be asked to have as an override, we're still going to be a great value living in Hatfield for the services we get. So, I mean, I spent a fair chunk of my weekend looking at tax bills in various places and how, you know, average home costs and, and we're so, we are so low, we are so economical that even with an override, we're still going to be economical versus pretty much everyone around us. Maybe one exception who has a lot of business to offset it. So optimistic.
That's a good message too, because we need young families to come, move here and be a part of Hatfield.
Absolutely, well, and they're certainly living more expensive places now, so they can afford it. Okay, so that's, so we're, we can look at the tuition warrant and we'll have Mr. Wood explain more about that. But the FY '24 budget, that will move to a conversation for April 24th. And that we will have
We are confirming that we will meet on April 24th.
And we need to post and advertise that meeting out to the public so that they can come. Because it's a conversation, it's a different, it's different than our business meeting.
Typically what's done is the budget hearing, so we'll have that as the part of our meeting of presenting whatever number is our budget and what it means for us.
Yeah. Yep. And we'll answer questions. I think we can make plans to reach out to invite, you know, interested groups. So the trustees, the Booster Club, the PTA, HAF, CPAC, you know, any group of supportive families who are invested or, you know, sort of our, our best hope for educating and getting this voted on. Okay, so do you want to talk about the tuition warrant?
Yeah, so I've gone back and forth now with the town administrator and our town accountant. Essentially what the, what our school committee needs to vote is, I gave you the language that our attorney provided. The, that probably is going to get whittled down by the town administrator. She was, she keeps looking at it and wondering how, you know, how to do that. But what we need to vote is more simple language in the sense that we need to vote that we're creating a revolving account to accept out of district tuition money, special ed tuition money.
What's been happening with the money up until we?
It's been, it's been coming into the town coffers, you know, for the school.
So this is just a separate revolving?
It'd be a separate revolving account, right?
It's essentially a new opportunity for revenue. It's not like this has been historically ongoing and we just are changing it. It's the creation of the new classes and the new opportunities to have tuition students created need.
Which started this year. So the money so far that's come in this year is sitting?
It's just sitting in an account in a, in a town's coffers. Essentially, it's, it's actually going to allow us to spend it, so we could always charge it. But it's just, it's in the account.
It'd be much cleaner if it's
Cleaner.
Sat.
Got it.
In the school.
So we don't have to whittle down the wording?
We do not.
She will do that.
She will do that.
So what do we need to vote on then?
So we should make a motion to accept tuition money for the purpose of accepting out of district students. Special ed students.
I thought we had done that.
Yeah, I thought we already voted to accept that, are we voting on creating a warrant?
On creating an account.
Right.
So we're
So we're looking for a motion to create a revolving school account that accepts special ed tuition dollars?
Yes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second?
There's a perplexed look, let's talk
Well, just before we vote, can you please clarify what you said about the printed warrant article that we have and how it will be whittled down?
So I think they're looking for brevity for the purpose of the warrant.
So we're not voting on this document, we're just voting on the concept?
The concept.
That we're going to create this account, okay.
And this was suggested wording by?
Our attorney.
Our attorney. And
So as a process, the town administrator will whittle it down, it'll go back to our attorney?
Yeah, just to, we can review it with him. I'm sure that she's referring it with her attorney, but yeah.
But the bottom line is that this warrant article is creating a new account for this non-resident tuition funding source.
Correct.
And that was the motion to create the account.
Can you just remind me what happens if we, if we accept a tuition-based student? And for right now, is it, do they, are the, are they paying month to month or do they pay?
We did it mid-year, we were going to do it mid-year, and then next year, part of that is because we didn't have this account to deal with. So next year, I think we were talking about either monthly or quarterly, we were going to bill it more often. But, so they got the half year, like the, at the 90-day school day mark. They, those invoices went out, which was January, I think, something like that. And then the other 90 days invoice will go out in June.
And then the risk if Hatfield doesn't end up being a successful program for those tuitioned in students, then there's no cost or risk to us and then we just either stop collecting payment or it would be withdrawn from this account?
Well, the IP drives the decision of the sending district. So if the sending district decided to make a placement elsewhere, then we would stop asking for tuition dollars and we would be able to spend whatever's left in the revolving account.
So if, you know, on day 122, there was a change of placement, they would only be charged up to that point.
Right.
So the only risk would be the potential staffing we might have on deck for a student in the program?
Correct.
Okay, any further conversation on creating a revolving school account to accept special ed tuition dollars? There's been a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
So okay, moving on to fun stuff, let's talk about graduation attire.
Can I say something very quickly?
I was hoping you would.
I, so just, so the committee is aware, I have to apologize, I forgot to do my homework. I did not update the, I didn't update it based on the conversation last time. So it still has the, the chords for academic excellence in there. And there was a, I, I did follow up with that to see kind of what the difference was with premierdo and, and the idea behind those chords. The idea behind those chords were for students who had higher than 4.0 GPAs and the premierdo was higher than 3.0 GPs, so there was a slight difference there. And I also had kept the misspelling of chords as like the guitar chords. No one's going to be playing, wearing guitar chords on graduation.
Has there been any, I, I've seen just a little bit of feedback about this, has there been any community response?
No, the students are excited about it. I mean, that's, that's, that's the only community. Yeah, that's the only community response I've received from it.
So where are you with the chord or the tassel for?
The, the tassels are, will 100% happen. So for, those are for anyone who has above a 3.0 GPA who is premierdo. So those are, those are in order, they're, we have
Okay, so those are still happening?
Those will happen regardless. The only question is whether there would be for students who had received a higher than 4.0 GPA, if they would have an additional chord around their neck.
I don't have a problem with that.
Celebrate those 4.0 costumes.
Right. I, I just didn't know if that one was replacing the other. And, yeah. Didn't want to lose that little bit of tradition, but I do like all these other additions.
Okay. Are we ready to put a vote on the table to approve?
I, I have one more question. If, if a student were, were checking the the caps before to kind of give your seal of approval that this is all set, this can go, but then you're, then you, if someone then changes it, would, is there any, are there any extras? There be one or two extras so that if something happens in the 10th hour, that there is an option so that they can still walk?
Are we going to tell them there are extras or will there actually be extras? I think that's, that's the question.
I would draw the question.
Yeah.
Or will they walk capless?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, I mean, our expectation is that everyone follows, follows the rules. There, you know, depending on the year, there may be extras, there may, may not be extras and that could be an option potentially. Or, or they may have to walk capless. I don't know what they would do with their tassel if they but but that's a, you know, that, I'd say that's a fitting consequence to, to not following a very clearly outlined
Well, another thing to consider, if you're, if you had to have extras, students are allowed to choose whether they're going to be in purple or white, so.
Or maybe I get to decorate them.
I see the fishing flies coming back out.
So, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the dress code for graduation documents with that correction of
Four-minute, four-minute change.
I second it.
Any additional conversation, any edits, any thoughts?
Excited to see this.
Yeah.
Yeah, looking forward to it. Okay, a motion is made to approve the dress code change for graduation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Off you go. Next up, Ms. Bench with a quick update, I believe, on the comprehensive planning Next up, Ms. Bench with a quick update, I believe, on the Comprehensive Planning Committee.
Yep. Just a quick update. I didn't write anything up, but I just wanted to update the committee and the community on the work that I've been doing with the Comprehensive Planning Committee. It's been really great. We have many, many representatives from different town departments and we have some at-large representation. And so the big thing that I did kind of want to talk about, but we already mentioned earlier, was the Cooler Communities Project, which is happening on May 4th again. And everyone is invited because it's also the band concert and everything else. So, yeah, it's really great and I hope that people will be there. The Comprehensive Planning Committee is also working on setting up a website and getting the word out about other feedback that we will be soliciting as the year goes on. But as I said, the big thing right now is the Cooler Communities Project. So if anyone wants to volunteer, they can reach out to me.
Awesome. The last item on our agenda tonight, I added in upcoming meetings because there's just a lot going on and I wanted to make sure it was on calendars. And also to just be looking ahead past May 9th so that we're figuring out when we meet, so that we just don't lose track. So Monday, April 24th will be a budget presentation and discussion. It'll be a budget hearing formally and what comes with that. An override conversation, at least for schools. There may be others, but because this committee had that time already on their schedule, we have the space held. But figure, let's take advantage of that. May 8th is our monthly meeting for May. That will be the superintendent review meeting, which means, folks, we need to get working on that. And we know that that can take some time, so please look at your calendars. Well, I will do my best to get materials out to you with as much advance warning as possible. May 9th is town meeting. It would be lovely if we could all be there, given the significance of, like, some years, I don't know that the whole committee needs to show up. This would be a year, if you have the opportunity, it would be great if everyone could be there. And I say that because I think, well, everyone will be jockeying to get babysitters. So just mentioning that now.
It has happened in the past that Smith Academy students have offered some babysitting kind of service thing. I don't know.
That would be an amazing thing if the principals might want to figure out how to help facilitate that. Because there are parents who are understandably concerned about how to manage that and show up to support schools. So anything we could do that would help support that?
Yeah, if it was broken out into kind of age groups of, you know...
Or drop off at HES and pick up on the way home. I don't know.
However, it could be done. That would be amazing.
We will, we will float that to you.
Especially if we want families who are concerned to be voting both at town meeting and in the ballot. Yeah, let's do what we can to help them.
Do we want a meeting between May 8th and May 16th?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
What do you mean, May 16th? Oh, the voting.
Just after May 16th?
I think it's after May 16th because we have to reorganize.
Right.
And also, the budget will depend on...
Yes, what happened. But we have to wait. Yeah, that's, we have to wait till after the 16th to know. Yes, we do. So let's take a look. So for those of you who have busy calendars on days of the week, I don't know if their Mondays continue to be the day.
How's the 22nd?
I was looking at the 22nd.
I personally don't have the 22nd, but I can hand the duty off.
I can do any day that week. The week of the 22nd is just...
Comprehensive planning is on Wednesday, so that's a no.
You're out on Tuesdays?
I'm out on Wednesdays. Can't do Wednesdays.
So what does Tuesday, the 23rd look like?
Tuesday, what?
We wouldn't necessarily have to be here.
Tuesday, the 23rd?
Seven o'clock?
Yep. So that'll be a reorganization and also a budget finalization. I'm also going to ask, Mr. Wood, can you help make sure that policy subcommittee and finance subcommittee meetings get booked? Because I think both of those skipped a month. And there's stuff to talk about.
Meeting before the 24th or before the May meeting?
I would like, I would like both groups to meet before May meeting.
I mean, with school vacation in there, I'm not sure that we could meet before the 24th.
We can be before the 24th.
It's, it's a month before the 8th.
Yes. Yeah, I'm just saying before the budget meeting on the 24th would be a little...
I think the finance subcommittee will probably try and make that happen.
But policy doesn't need to.
Yeah, we'll schedule that.
That's doable.
All right. Anything else relevant to that?
I don't think so. Okay.
When is currently the last day of school?
22nd. I love that you all knew that giant spot.
I knew it. 22nd, it's a Thursday, it's a half a day.
Can we also look, so we've talked about May 23rd, can we look at June? Assuming we meet in June?
First part of June is going to be better for me. We are going to be out of town.
Maybe like the week of the 12th?
Week of the 12th would be great. Yeah.
How are you feeling about Mondays versus other days of the week?
Mondays are good.
Mondays are good for me.
It's fine.
I feel like I'm ending a week somehow. Like, it's a weird thing to have these on Mondays, but I'm okay with it. It's just... So the 12th, is that a possibility for you?
Yeah.
Do we want to look into July?
I think we should hold off.
Okay. So I'm just, people's vacation schedules are going to start getting settled, so I just want to be mindful of that. In July, we could...
Some people don't take vacations.
It could also be, July, August could be workshop time too. Like, we could, we could do that as well.
There was a time when we didn't have July business meetings. Took the month off. Those were different times.
Those times have changed.
Okay.
How about the 10th?
That's true. Well, why don't we just...
Let me, let me ask it this way. Does anyone have major travel plans for July and August that we, we just want to avoid?
The week of the 16th, I'm not around.
July 16th week?
The week of the 4th, I'm not around.
Yeah, I'm gone from the 14th to the 25th, so the 10th.
If I can interrupt, just got a text message from Mr. Moriarty.
We have news.
The full amount we requested funding for the school is on the override.
What's the override total?
So it just means we have to get the override to pass.
What was the total?
He said the full amount.
For the override. That's the, that's the other piece of the puzzle, because that's how challenging it is. I hear the wrong... So the week of July 10th?
I, I am not available that week.
Okay.
If it's like a working session, it might not be necessary. I'm not saying that you're not important. I'm just saying that if we're doing some... Business work on stuff.
The week of the 10th or the 17th are the best weeks in July for me.
We're going to lose a bunch of other people the week of the 17th. So... What about if we hit the very end of July, what happens on the 31st? It's almost August, it could maybe count for...
Probably, okay. That's, that's going to be hard.
We definitely need a meeting in August before school starts. Oh, yeah, we're going to have to approve a whole lot of, like, the handbooks come back up. And however, probably fewer changes this year than last year, so...
Would it be possible to think about our July and August meetings and talk about it when we meet on the 24th of this month?
We can do that, but I think they had a, they had a heads up, come look, come prepare. So, but you guys didn't get that heads up. So we will take it up again at the end of the 24th to secure...
July and August.
July and August. And you and I will set up what's on those agendas so that we kind of make sure we got all the stuff covered.
So I just asked for finance and policy. I just, it's up to you, so you need to tell me what days work best for you. Email me and I'll match up.
I'm going to start with your calendar. You give some options and I'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I am in favor. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.